Good evening. Thank you for joining us. This is a special Select Board meeting for December 5th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us. Now, I know that our last meeting, the recording did not work and the audio was bad. So, we're going to review a little bit the first offer that came, talk about the revised, and let you know where we are in our team. Yesterday, the team met with MGM and went over the revised and where we are in the process. Please let me know if I need to bring this closer because I'm going to go up to the boards. Do you think I should pull this a little closer? Okay.
You got me good.
You got me good? Okay. All right, the initial offer that we understand went to many communities was $50,000 for legal and consulting fees incurred, $75,000 for an annual mitigation payments, third-party studies for baseline conditions, third-party studies for first and fifth year for the look-back. And the look-back is for net adverse impact, which means they will try to assess the positives as well as the negative impacts on the community and decide where the net impact is. $25,000 annual payment for consulting fees while we're going towards the look-back. Disagreements on net adverse impact, if we disagree on that number, will be settled through arbitration. The term is the initial gaming license duration, and that license duration is 15 years. Other MGM considerations when we started the negotiation was no voluntary disbursement for our costs without an agreement. They initially came out with a $15,000 offer and said they would not move off of that until there was an actual signature on the agreement. No conceding surrounding community status without an agreement. The look-back approach is non-negotiable. They were really focusing on the look-back approach of one year and five years, and they would like an agreement prior to December 15th. December 15th is when most of the studies with the MEPA study and everything else would be on. They went to the look-back approach and started to go before the reports were out because they felt, the way the timeline was, they would never really be able to get the reports in time for us to have a solid number. And that's why they felt it was fair to MGM and the communities to actually concentrate mainly on the look-back approach. The team met with MGM yesterday, and there was a revised MGM proposal that came out. And I believe this mirrors what was signed by Ludlow. And the Ludlow signing came yesterday on December 4th. $50,000 for consulting fees at signing, and it's not a matter of it being incurred, it's just $50,000 flat fee. Designated surrounding community still at signing. They feel that's very important. Annual mitigation payments still at 75. Payments to start when MGM collects revenues. So, it's not till the doors are open and they're actually collecting revenues. Annual study costs paid over nine years instead of 15. So, even though it used to be over $25,000 a year, they changed the payout schedule. So, there's almost like an acceleration of those $25,000 payments, but on the first nine years. And then, the last six years, there's no payment for our consultant fees. Third-party, there is no process to object to the choice. Now, what I'm describing here is an analysis done by our legal team. The look-back, the change is there. It's a direct result of the project. So, any indirect costs are not covered. So, that could be an area that would be argued when we started to analyze what our negative adverse impacts were in the look-back. The look-back is offset by payments of beneficial results. So, they could look and see if our housing values increased, and they could say, "Well, we feel that that was a direct impact of people being hired or going to the casinos," and so that they would decrease that cost of what they felt the adverse impacts were. So, that would be in the negotiations. The look-back, major negative impacts only that exceed $500,000. So, if we felt that there was a minor impact change, they're really, at the look-back, they would look at only major changes. And at the look-back, if no impact in the first year, you can't bring it up in year five. So, if we don't see an impact on our water sewer in year one, we can't suddenly bring that up on year five. So, this is again just a brief description by our attorneys of the revised offer. Payments are offset by the annual $75,000 a year. Then, if it's more than the 75, and we see in the look-back, we really have able to prove we need more money, we first have to apply to the state fund, that's, I think, $20 million fund. And if then we're denied that, we can go to MGM. The one-size-fits-all provision was removed. This description, I'm getting a little confused in. It's that we can't compare ourselves to another town. So, we can't say if another town gets more than us, then we reopen the hole. So, the comparison of the towns was removed in the revised. The one issue that I know the Select Board was really caught on was being designated as a surrounding community. The team went in and they really were pushing that they wanted surrounding community designation. And the MGM refused to move on that, and they refused to move on the other request by the Select Board, which was the consulting fees being more than $15,000 at this time. I went to the MGC site, Mass Gaming Commission site, and they have the analysis of the Bolton-Fitchburg designations, which was very interesting because the MGM says that they feel they have an argument against us being a surrounding community designation, and they declared the Fitchburg denial as an example. And what I did was I actually kept the notes, and I thought I had printed out enough for everybody. But if you want to look and see how they did it, on November 21st, Part One, it goes into the analysis of why Fitchburg was found not to be a surrounding community, but Bolton was. And it really is based heavily on the traffic. I'll give this to you after I spend a few minutes on this. What I found especially interesting is that they said, they were going to say, "Well, let's just do a minor analysis. If we decided it's a surrounding community, we don't have to spend all this time talking about it." And the Gaming Commission said, "No, actually, this is almost like a precursor to arbitration." It's really great because we can go through the steps of deciding what the impacts are with the community. And so, they decided they wanted to go through each of the five steps. And if you don't make the strong argument then, they were saying it would affect how you would be reimbursed later. Now, when it came down to it, I sort of took some notes on where they thought it was really important. And the bottom line was Bolton, how close you are to the casino is not a designation. That is not definitive. According to the legislation, whether you're two, three, five miles, really doesn't matter. What matters is what is the impact and what's going to happen to your traffic down the line. And they felt that Fitchburg did not have the traffic problems going down into, I would pronounce it wrong, Ly- Lancaster?
Leamester.
Leamester.
Leamester or Lancaster?
Leamester. And, but Bolton did. Bolton was sort of like Route 5. It gets backed up. And they said it wasn't going to take much for it to really spill over into the other neighborhoods. So, what doesn't matter so much is how close it is, is what is the effect of the negative impacts. And so, then they went ahead and they talked about Fitchburg having more problems with housing. And so, the analysis is very interesting. So, it's worth it to watch that first half hour. So, I know that we were upset that they would not designate us. But in some ways, the Gaming Commission was saying that this was going to be an opening to arbitration, almost your opening statement to describe what the negative impacts are. The other thing that, we just came from a meeting in West Springfield, where the council from Springfield and West Springfield were talking to the surrounding communities. And Tim Brennan was there, and I had asked him, we have joined this Pioneer Valley Planning Commission thing, where the eight towns, and I said, "Who designated who the eight towns would be?" And they said MGM did. But they made it clear that if you were part of those eight towns, it didn't mean they considered you a surrounding community because that's a special designation that they feel is part of the whole process. So, right now, the offer's on the table. The initial agreement, I understand, is off. And this is at least the last, and right now, we're at the point where the team is trying to decide what the next step was. Anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that was a good summary. We did put up the map just to show, you know, the geography of Ludlow being a surrounding community designated by MGM and Demcasting some doubt as to whether Long Meadow would be a surrounding community. People can look at the map and judge for themselves.
Channel 22 reported tonight that Agawam signed a surrounding community.
Yeah, I guess there's going to be a great announcement about that tomorrow. I just heard that at the meeting we just came from.
And Wilberham is, I think, voting possibly tonight.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Well, I would say that it was clear from the meeting tonight that West Springfield is looking more at the timeline in the same way that we are. And I think that, truthfully, I think that speaks to, again, you can look at that map and see that this does not impact every community the same. And I think that, I'll only speak for Long Meadow, it's worth taking the time to do it right because I think we have much more at stake than some of the other communities.
An interesting point on Bolton is, they said Bolton, from downtown Bolton to the actual gambling establishment is like eight minutes. And they said Fitchburg, it was 20 minutes. So, if they really are taking someone who Ludlow, where we could easily say is 15, 20 minutes away, or Wilberham, I think that our designation according to what MGC is using gives us a little bit of a solid basis of going forward.
Any other thing I'd add in terms of process and next steps is, and we talked about this Monday night, in terms of continuing our process on data collection with an eye towards submitting a counterproposal. We have discussed this, we discussed it with the attorneys on the phone. And we know we need to get more data before we can craft a specific counter. But I just want to be mindful that we are trying to head in that direction and that we should be thinking individually and as a group, or the board needs to be thinking as a group, what it feels would be a suitable counterproposal. We do believe that, under the statute, we do have an obligation to make a counter to MGM and not just, you know, leave it hanging. We do believe the Commission would not look favorably upon Long Meadow if we received a proposal from MGM and did not respond with something.
Can I ask a question? How do we go about crafting a unified counterproposal that I believe is, we do confidentially only because, you know, my counterproposal say, "Let's ask for $5 million, but we won't accept the thing under $4 million." And do that in a way that's not public because we don't want to tell MGM, "We're only going to accept $4 million" because they'll come back and say, "We're not going to give you $5 million," as opposed to letting us ask for that. So, because of this open-meeting law issue that really binds us to discussing this thing in open meetings, we can't discuss, even though it's a contract, we can't discuss it in an executive session legally. So, I guess the question is, I'd like to talk about process before we talk about numbers because I think we need to understand how five people who are in charge, you know, who are chartered by the towns' residents with forming this negotiation can come up with a single directive to our attorneys and our town manager.
Well, one of the things that we thought about was to have the conversation begin with each Select Board member opening a discussion with our legal team and where they're feeling where things are. Just an opening discussion on that. I understand we can go at executive session if property is being discussed. Now, after December 10th, GPI will come up with their recommendations in regards to the traffic. So, if they really are dealing with intersections and issues like that, then we will be allowed to go into executive session for that. And I think this is a process that's going to take a while, and that's why I was hoping that people would start communications. And, you know, it could go through me, or it could go directly to the attorney. And I know that's taking up legal fees, but I think that it is such a very important part of the future of Long Meadow that I think it's worth it for the board to have that opportunity to discuss this with the attorney.
Good. Just two questions. What you handed out, this analysis of the Bolton-Fitchburg, are these your notes, or is this what MGM said?
Oh, no. These are my notes, and these are comments that I thought were important. And, you know, I was trying to watch it today, and I didn't even get to finish. But I felt it was so essential to what was important to the board last time that I would try to pull out lines that I thought were important, such as the Mass DOT designation was really important to them, while other things weren't, such as the housing issues and things like that, which surprised me. Because it's a very difficult process in that we're seeing case law, as you and I would describe it, being decided on the fly here as we're in the middle of the process. And the adjudicators are going to be the Mass Gaming Commission. And the more we can understand what their thought processes are, the better they are. But I would not rely on my notes. I would go to the original to get a feeling.
Well, thank you for doing that. Just one other question. We had voted at our special meeting, I think it was November 14th, to host a meeting with other surrounding communities. I was just wondering where that stood.
I've got to get that going. And I know that's, and there's the other thing that we said we wanted to do, which was to have, as we were getting closer to actual offers on the table, to have a townwide meeting so people could understand where we were in the process too. Now, my understanding of the strategy of MGM is, as of last week, we all heard they're accelerating this to December 13th. We all thought that the process would go to December 31st or on. But I think they are trying to get as many communities to sign in the next week or so, even before the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission meetings come out. Now, I think that, at this point in time, various members of the Select Board have been calling to try to reach out to other towns and speak to them. And for us to put a meeting together, we could do it in one week, but we're sort of at a crunch time now.
Yeah, I mean, because I kind of feel like, I mean, for the towns that are entering to an agreement, the sort of the horse is out the barn, you know, for that.
Well, with the decision by Fitchburg, to deny Fitchburg, even though they are physically adjoining, I think that was a bit of a jolt to the whole process. And I think MGM's moving forward with this.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm afraid that MGM is sort of trying to play us off one against the other, you know, and create a race to the bottom.
I'm sorry. Richard?
No, no, I was, I was. She couldn't find the right one. You know, while I really enjoy hearing the comments that we make as board members, we've hired three experts, and I still have to kick the ball over pretty heavy into their court for them to advise us and help us down this road because, you know, we know this room is filled with emotions and different things. But they are the technical experts that are going to bring this evidence to us for us to analyze. When can we expect some sort of briefing from them and some sort of recommendations from these different individuals we've hired?
Well, I think next week is pretty essential between the ninth, which is the suitability hearing for MGM, and the 10th is GPI. And I would expect that, I have set up several meetings next week, so we can, as we get the information, it can be put out there. I was hoping by the end of next week, we would start to have some solid information in our hands.
Our attorneys, our attorney, Attorney Moss, without addressing it specifically, I think has issued some guidance on the timeline for the coming weeks as today via email. So, I would refer to that in terms of what the attorney feels like the next steps are going to be in the timeline is going to be.
Do you say that we have received this?
I believe so.
Okay.
The other thing I would say, if I, oh, are you finished?
For the time being.
Okay. Because I wanted to answer your question, Mark, because I did have that conversation with our attorney. And we did not achieve resolution on how to do that. But I do recall from Attorney Martell's presentation in August, Select Board members can't have individual discussions with people to express their views on a particular topic so long as they don't relay to each other that conversation and they're not talking to each other. So, you know, it is not a violation of the open-meeting law for each of you to contact our attorney and say, "Here's how I feel about the agreement or any other part of this process." And of course, and that is a confidential discussion, attorney-client privilege. So, I would encourage, you know, Select Board members to do that, to express how they view on it because I do think it's a be important part of, you know, moving the ball forward.
So, a couple of things. First of all, has the next meeting with MGM been scheduled after yesterday's meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, I want to just follow up on your, what you, Les.
Can I pause just a minute? I know you had to rearrange your schedule. Is there anything you wanted to ask before you leave?
It's okay. I have to leave in about five minutes.
Okay. Oh, I thought you had to leave.
Can I just ask one thing before you go? Because we've been operating in a vacuum from the very beginning in that we can't talk about anything. We get communication from the attorney who blind copies us. Now, there are three or four communities that have signed surrounding community agreements. Is there a way to find out how they actually came up with that? Because they all are, they might have a town administrator. But I don't believe, I mean, I don't know who Ludlow hired, if anybody. I don't know who, Agawam must have had somebody on retainer because of Hard Rock. But they came to an agreement that was, and I don't know how they came to an agreement if you can't talk about it.
Paul, I think that's a valid question. But my sense is, they may have just said, "We got a proposal in front of us from MGM. All of us in favor." You know, kind of thing, as opposed to discussing and negotiating. But you're right, we ought to ask.
They, well, they, I have been in meetings with most of the people who are representatives of those communities. And what they, what most communities have done is delegated a responsibility for negotiating to either a town administrator, an attorney, or something like that, and allowed their representative to negotiate and then bring a proposal or a counterproposal, depending on the case, to the elected body for consideration. The elected officials, I don't think, had been too directly involved in the negotiations. And that's how, I mean, that's how they essentially, they weren't really open-meeting issues because the board only debated the proposal that was negotiated by their designee.
Okay, but the next, go ahead.
To your point, it sounded like there wasn't much negotiating going on.
Right.
They just took the MGM proposal and.
But Stephen, yeah, so my question would be, how did that individual, who was the designated negotiator or whatever it was, get input from the people who they were negotiating on behalf of? Or they just said, you know, "Town administrator, just go negotiate and let us know how you do," as opposed to, "And here's our thoughts."
I'm sure that they had discussions like we had, we have been having in terms of what, and I am speculating here. But it's possible they had discussions, and the board members, the elected officials, expressed their views about what they think are town priorities and impact issues that they want addressed. And then, the designee took that information under consideration and negotiated on those grounds.
I guess where I'm headed, Marie, with this discussion is, I'd like to see a process by which each of us is individually briefed on the findings of our consultants, you know, where we can do that perhaps. But I'm saying, I'd like to do it individually because I'd like the consultants to talk numbers. Then have each of us in turn have a scheduled meeting with our attorney to say, "Based on that briefing, I think we ought to be at this for our request." And then, we trust the attorney, unfortunately, to hear five different opinions and go forth and say, "Sorry, Mr. Grant, we couldn't get everything you wanted to, but Mr. Santinello, we got pretty much what you were looking for," and that kind of stuff. And they'll have records for us that they can then come back to us through attorney-client privilege and share with us. But that will give us a chance to, A, hear the, hear some facts so that we can form a basis for where each of us wants to go, get that information to a negotiator, and then have the negotiation take place. Now, I'm not saying it's the only way to do it, but that's a way to do it. And it sure beats the way we're doing it right now, which is in a vacuum.
Do you feel?
I've got to go one minute.
Sure.
One thing that I'd like to say, to sort of piggyback on Mark's point, is not so much brief. I feel like we get a lot sort of spoken to. I mean, I want to see reports, you know, I want to see the analysis.
The problem is, those are public documents, Alex. If our consultant writes a report on the economic impact of a casino on public safety or on public health, that becomes a public document, and it interferes with our ability to negotiate. On the other hand, if it's a work in progress. Because it's a report to the Select Board as opposed to, it's a work in progress and it's his, and then he sits down and briefs us all with our attorneys present, and it becomes attorney-client privilege. Now, I may be wrong, but I believe that's the, that's the, that's the problem.
But I guess what I'm getting at is that if we have an expert who's done his or her job completely and said, "Look, this is what I'm willing to stand up for. I'm willing to testify about," then that's what we're going with, right? I mean, if it goes to arbitration, you know, I mean, that's what we're comfortable with, you know. And I just don't know whether we're at that point, whether, you know, this is so preliminary. But I'm not going to feel comfortable with the counteroffer until I see some sort of finished product where, you know, the experts feel like they've studied it sufficiently to take a position that they're willing to stand up for at the arbitration, so.
And I guess, I think it's, I think we can, under what Mark just said, I think we can do that on an individualized basis. And I just want to be clear, we're not trying to hide things from the public, but.
Trying to hide it from MGM?
From MGM. I mean, MGM has reported that their trip distribution modeling is proprietary because it's really tied to how they analyze who's going to be spending the money at the casinos. And they don't, that is an industry thing that they do. So, I get why they want to make it proprietary. So, they have, pardon the pun, they have cards that they can hide. We have to play with ours all face up. So, when we have opportunities to share information confidentially, so MGM can't prey upon it and take it apart before we've even reached an arbitration hearing, we should be taking advantage of those opportunities. So, I think we can get you what you need, as long as we can understand that there is some discretion involved.
The other thing, Alex, I would just say is that I think we ought to have the opportunity to talk to our experts who are not residents and say, "Thank you for what you did. However, did you consider whatever?" So, get a chance to, if you will, at least one iteration, if not five iterations with them, as opposed to we get a report. Now, that's kind of literally carved in ink and paper as opposed to an iteration. So, that's another reasons why I'd rather get briefed verbally rather than have a report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I read the, I read the thing again, the surrounding community agreement update and/or status update. And although it alludes to time periods, it does not have any specifics in there saying when the attorney's going to come forth with recommendations or the safety experts come forth with recommendations. I still am very convinced and feel compelled to say, "We should get reports from these people. We paid for reports. These are the experts. We are not the experts. We will take their data. They should be going on record, as Alex said, making recommendations to someone that they can go to arbitration with and court on." And I'm waiting to see those documents. And I'd like to know what the timetable is for their delivery. They have to, I hope our attorney is working up a package. But it's alluded to in here, but there's no dates given. There's deadlines for this and that and the other. But when are we going to see something from our team and the legal team and the team of professionals we've hired?
Well, I would like us to, because I don't, I don't think that'll be ready by midweek. But I would hope that everyone would have preliminary discussions with the attorneys. And then, when the reports are in, which could be the end of next week or the beginning of the week after, they can have subsequent. But I was hoping people would start the dialogue even before the reports came in. But if you want to wait till the reports are in.
Believe me as the last one then, because I would like to see what the experts are saying first.
December 10th is a key date because the GPI review on behalf of Long Meadow and its surrounding communities will be presented on the 10th. And that is information we need to have as kind of a, to really, as really a trigger point for a lot of our other analysis.
Okay, but you guys are the focal point, I guess, are talking back with our hired experts. I would hope there's some dialogue where we're expressing them our desires to have some type of reports brought back to this board.
And they are, the stuff that they can be, the things they can be working on without that, absent that information, they are.
Right.
But that, in terms of the larger issues that are. But that, in terms of the larger issues that are calculated based on projected vehicles and people coming to the casino, that really all gets, the threshold date there is the 10th.
Stephen, is it possible for our experts then to provide that information to our attorneys for part of negotiation, and then have the attorneys share it with us in the nature of...
We've already done that once with the report, one of our initial reports on, in terms of the cost of certain...
So, maybe that's the way of getting us something...
Get us up to speed on what they're saying.
Yeah, as things become available, they are transmitted to you in attorney-client reporting, and we received one of those already.
But like I said, I like the opportunity to iterate, at least on some of the stuff I read, you know, that I think that they may have, you know, could tweak some numbers.
And personally, I would like to know what their bottom line is and what was the methodology to get to that bottom line. How did they come to this conclusion? Because we're not having the opportunity to talk openly with all these people, so maybe we can get this in an email then.
Yeah, one of the things we could possibly do is, I could ask them after the 10th, and they've had a chance to digest some of that information, maybe the end of next week or early in the following week, have, invite, see if they have some time to come out here and do office hours with each of you individually.
Or even conference calls, but that's what I think we're talking about, with start the dialogue, so you have a chance to talk to the consultants as well as the legal team in case you want to tweak it or you're concerned about the methodology being used.
I want to see what they've got to offer first, Marie. I find no value in me talking to any one of these people at this point until I see what documents they produce. And that's when I'll have questions.
Okay. Now, one of the questions I have is, everything's, of course, MGM wants us to accelerate the process by the 13th, but the MEPA study comes out the 15th. And how important is that going to be for our experts too? Or is that just a huge document that's...
It's a huge document. The traffic component of that, which is most significant, I mean, you even said yourself that the MGC, in evaluating the surrounding community designations focused on traffic, it seemed, from your notes. So, I know we've said, you know, traffic shouldn't be the only thing we focus on, but if the gaming commission is saying that that's something they're focusing on, then that we should take some lesson from that. But we, so that's the 10th. In terms of the other, you know, air quality and things like that, some of that won't really be applicable to Long Meadow. Some of the things are only evaluated if the host community, they don't evaluate, you know, certain environmental impacts on surrounding communities. And so, we just have to, Pioneer Value Planning Commission does review that document as a part of their normal, that's what the planning commissions do. So, Pioneer Value Planning Commission on their own, not as a part of any separate study that we've engaged in, reviews the DEIR, the Draft Environmental Impact Report. And I'm sure we will get a copy of it and look at it ourselves for information that pertains to Long Meadow.
But, you know, like Stephen mentioned, there's a good possibility to be very little information that pertains to Long Meadow, because it wasn't done for us, it's done for the development.
Correct.
So, it was to develop across the river, not us.
So, it's not that essential for our...
There may be some tidbits, but the study was for Springfield, not for Long Meadow.
Yeah, one of the things they separated from the MEPA filing was a regional health impact.
Right.
And truthfully, they focused on the host community. But that report isn't going to be included as a part of the MEPA study. So, I, you know, I'd love to tell you that there's going to be some wonderful epiphany that's going to happen with the MEPA study or some of these other things, but things just don't seem to be heading in that direction. It's...
And I believe we had a conversation two weeks ago where we questioned, the whole process seems to be reversed, because that would be one of the developmental documents that you would have thought would have been totally reviewed before there was even a referendum. Because there could be something nestled into that document that could be very negative.
Well, MGM will tell you that they are much further ahead on their MEPA filings than any other developer. I don't, I have not fact-checked that, but they allege that other communities are reaching agreements absent this information.
Right.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah. And there is something on the web about Agwam, they've got some figures there.
They have some figures.
Yeah, they have some figures.
I'm going to emphasize again, try to go to that November 21st, because meeting...
November?
November 21st is where they talked about the community designation.
Oh, go backwards.
Because that's going to, it's an interesting analysis on what they've...
It's finally been posted now?
Yeah, it's posted on the YouTube site, because I feel the analysis is important for us to understand maybe why some of the communities are coming to agreements at this point in time.
Right. Okay, but, you know, by the proposal, MGM revised proposal, I don't see anything earth-shattering up there. I don't see any...
I think some of the terms are really, it's not, the non-revised, I thought was a better agreement.
Right, I see a lot of caveats in that document, that I would like to certainly know what our legal team's thinking, but it's a lay, I look at some of those and I say, mm, they seem like they're not correct.
Somebody pointed out to them all the loopholes they left in the original agreement, and they closed them.
Well, that kind of looks like there was some of that done, Mark, yes.
I mean, that's the way it looks to me. I guess I'm still hung up a little bit on our process. I want to, you know, I threw something out there, and I don't know, but I'd like to, A, see if we have consensus, if not downright agreement on a process, one. And number two, one of the things that concerns me is, we have five people on our select board. And we've got to come to an understanding that not all five of us are going to get everything we want in this agreement within our group. And I think we all almost need to give our negotiating group, our attorney, some guidance in, you know, you're going to have to get three votes to get this thing approved, I mean, clearly, you know, so you better make sure you're satisfying, you know, a majority of the needs of the majority of the people. And I think they need to understand that, and we need to say that, but it can be a real problem, because it's no shock that within our group, we've had some disagreements or discussions or differences in what we might be looking for, and that's before we even started talking about mitigation and mitigation, you know, requirements. So, I think we ought to very clearly recognize that that's a fact, and talk about that, and talk about the process going forward. If we come out of this room with nothing more than the process moving forward for the next three days to a week, we're better off than we were when we came in. So, I'd like to hear, you know, Richard and Paul and Marie, you think about what the process is.
I guess I have, my first question will be, do you want to have, continue to have these open session meetings where informed where we are in the process, or are you satisfied with just having the attorney send information to each select board member? Until we can, you can have your individual meeting with the attorneys?
How about yes to both?
You'd want both.
Because if there's information that is taking place that's not being shared, there's only one, there's only two people in the room who are going to know whether we're getting all the information shared, and that's you two, if you're at the meeting. Clear and simple, we're not there. So, if you feel there's something, but what we'd like to refrain from is hearing about something a week later.
Right.
When it comes out in the meeting and it acts like it's common knowledge, and we sit here dumbfounded, and it's something that we have passion over, which some of us have passion on a lot of issues.
Well, we'll keep the meetings then. I didn't know if everyone felt this was repetitive, because they were going to get it from the attorneys too, or if it was good to lay everything out. And part of the reason I felt this was important is also, the residents have to understand where we are in the process too. This is, this is not an easy process, and when you look at the agreements that come out and what's being done in other parts of the state, it is very concerning on how we're moving forward. So, you want the meeting still. Are you satisfied to have the one-on-ones with the attorney by the end of next week? Or would you prefer the following week when the MEPA study's out, or is that's not important to you?
The time, I think the attorney should set the timing. I mean, they're the ones who want to, you know, that's why the first thing I said is, when's the next meeting with MGM? If the next meeting with MGM is early next week, then we better do it sooner rather than later. If it's indeterminate, then, you know, but we don't want to drag our heels. I mean, we want to go back to MGM with a counteroffer, and we want to go do it in a timely manner, and, but it's not for me to say what the timing is, it's the attorney's.
You want the reports.
Yeah, I think, I think we hired these people to give us advice, and I think for us to move forward without the advice is kind of silly at this point. And another very small point, you know, like you've got a wonderful breakdown, and that's like the Cliff Notes of all the stuff that's here.
Of its, yeah.
And that's a lot more benefit than reading the agreement.
Yeah.
Because these are the actual Cliff Notes of the agreement. So, I'd like to see, that put an electronic format, and it kicked us to an email today as soon as it was produced, and I don't know, maybe the ink's still wet on it.
The first...
First one is.
Those we got.
Right, the second one.
The second one, yeah, well...
I can send that, it's actually, I did it in a Word document that I gave to Debbie, so I can do that. The third one I'll have to type in.
And what I, the other one I would like to see everyone to get is a breakdown of the Malden Agreement in the same way, because I think there's some very interesting clauses in there.
Is our legal team going to look at the Malden Agreement in that fashion?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Richard and I were just talking before, and with Paul, you know, one of the interesting things is the agreement to, for the casino operators spend $25,000 a year on local stores as giveaways to their, whatever, gambling club or something, it got to that detail, which I thought was pretty interesting. There's a bunch of stuff in there.
I like the two and a half percent increase every year.
Walt said that at the very beginning, but...
I think realistically, I think the week of the 16th is when we will really start talking brass tacks.
Right.
I think we'll have a lot more information in hand, I think our consultants will be in a better position to really inform and not to speculate.
Right.
And I think as, I think as been previously alluded to, our target date is not necessarily the same as MGM's target date. We think it's, we think it is in good faith to present the counter sometime before December 31st, when they have their deadline to submit their application. So, I don't want to convey that we need to do it in the next day or two. I think the week of the 16th to really sharpen our thinking on what a counterproposal should be is perfectly reasonable and sufficient to meet what we think is our good-faith deadline.
Well, I would agree, and it may be a little bit later than that, but it is in good faith, and we are operating in good faith. There's nothing bad faith about waiting for our experts to give us information, since we have been denied a lot of information during this process.
If we time right, we can wrap it up and put a bow on it.
Right. But I think, I think for me to break forward and say, well, I'm not going to worry about the experts, and for me to be spouting off, I just think it's not responsible behavior on my part. I feel uncomfortable with that.
And I agree with you. I mean, that's why I said I thought, you know, I use the word briefing, but hear from our experts.
Yeah.
And then use that briefing to, you know, to form an opinion.
Correct.
And I agree with you. I mean, I'd be pulling numbers out of the air right now without hearing from our experts. Although, I will say publicly, I've done some, more than back of the envelope, but not PhD thesis kind of analysis to come up with numbers. I was thinking of, I'm going to be interested to see how close the experts come to it.
I thought you were going to tell us you'd done some stuff you weren't proud of.
No, no.
He's very proud of it.
I'm proud of everything.
But I want everyone to realize though, if there comes up something that they're concerned about, they can always still shoot that email to the attorneys.
Yeah.
And so that the dialogue is open at all points in time.
Yeah, there's never been anything preventing that. In fact, we've done, we've done some of that.
And the one thing is that my understanding is that MGM said if there was any information missing that we needed to get, that you have a direct phone number of someone to call to try to get it, and you're working with your experts to make sure they have everything they need.
Yeah, and in terms of the information, I mean, I think we've reported that the information has been slow in coming. You know, I think the pressure on the deadline and the timing of the information certainly looks suspicious, but I think it takes time for engineers and other types of analysts to put together reports and do the work. So, like I said, and because of the timelines that are built into the statute, I, you know, other communities may be signing, and, you know, good on them, but we know we have more time under the law. And so, being thorough and accurate as possible, I think, is the watchword for how we're proceeding. And I'm glad to hear the board, you know, supports taking the time we need to do it right. So, I appreciate that.
I guess the other thing I was going to ask about, I'm not sure we've gotten a process here, but I heard the week of the 16th, so I guess we're working toward that, is some questions about who speaks for the select board and who speaks for the town of Long Meadow. And I think we need to address that as a group, and designate a spokesperson so that we don't end up with five or six or seven separate voices, if I include the attorneys and the town manager.
I just thought maybe there was a special election.
No, no, the five of us, the town manager and our attorneys. And I don't know how to do that, but I think we need to do that only because, at this point, getting our message out is important, but it needs to be a unified message as opposed to a splintered message.
And I think that was made clear too, that anytime someone makes a mistake, or let's say a statement was repeated in the press a week later and it's no longer true, all of that can and does affect how we're going forward on whether it's good faith. So, I would, I would like us to almost come to a consensus about statements that are going out and where are we on the process, because I think the next few weeks are going to be very, very, very important to our negotiations and how we're going forward.
I thought we had already come to this consensus. I thought we had done this some time ago when we talked about having Marie and Stephen dealing with the issues. And I'm not saying that they were official spokesperson, but it was my understanding then that they certainly were having a more vocal point in it than we were at that point.
Well, I don't think we've ever really come to the agreement on how we were going to release information and have a common voice.
And what I wanted to add further to, I think we've already explored the options that whatever we say in this room basically is non-bonding.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we can, we can hope and dream that we do this, that, and the other, but we've already found out that select men, select women can pretty well say whatever they'd like to say. Unfortunately.
But, but we can make it clear, Richard, that they don't speak for the board or for the town. So, that I can stand up and say, the sky is orange, you know, and they can say, well, that's Mark's opinion, but it does not reflect, you know. Now, it's tough, because I'm a member of the select board, but I think we ought to make it clear that, you know, to, whether it's the press, some fool we're here now, or anybody else is, you know, the spokesperson for the town of Long Meadow is whoever we said it was, you can talk to anybody you want to, but they don't represent the official view of the town, it only comes from them, no.
Well, and I don't disagree with you, Mark. I fully agree with you. And I think we've always had agreement on that. That's one thing, total agreement with every member, but I think we know that people can go talk to anybody they'd like, and unfortunately, that's happening.
And they'll continue to do that, but I think it gives us some level of protection and coverage to say, you know, yeah, Richard was off shooting his mouth off, but, you know, pardon me, but he was doing it on his own and wasn't doing it as a representative of the select.
And I spoke, I spoke with the chair earlier today, that it was my exact point. I was very concerned about the dual representation that somebody can have in front of a camera, where they're representing two different entities instead of just the select board. So, that said, I'm open, I'll take any, I'll second any nomination that goes up for who the spokesperson is.
Not to weigh in on the decision necessarily, but I do want to sharpen the point on the risks, you know, that our attorneys had touched on this a little bit, when they had given us some guidance about taking official positions as a board, and the board has not done that to its credit. If the statements made by select board members, whether in their official capacity or not, do in some fashion color either the MGC's analysis of the requests we make to them, or an arbitrator's view of the town working in good faith and being fair and reasonable, and I don't know that that's going to be the case, but if it does, I just, I don't know if the distinction will be made about what was official town correspondence and what was just one individual member, you know, doing their own thing. And that's, I think, that's, I think, the risk that we, all of us who speak in some official capacity for the town, by virtue of our roles, runs. So, I just, I really feel like we need to be mindful of that, because, you know, I just, I'd hate, and speaking for myself, I'd hate to have a situation where I said something that wasn't appropriate and ended up hurting the town because it came up in negotiations or came up in an arbitration hearing as a demonstration that we weren't being fair and reasonable.
Yeah, if I could, I'm going to put that in English. So, what you just said is that when Mr. Mazza or somebody else from the press comes up to me, my best approach is to say, the official spokesperson for the town of Long Meadow is Stephen Crane. spokesperson for the town of Long Meadow is Stephen Crane. I have no comment. I refer you to him. That's the right thing for us to do. The fact that it's not being done then is all counter to what I think I heard Mr. Foster saying and what I thought we should be saying and whoever we designate as the spokesperson, right? And especially if I was going to stand up and say something that I think, to use your words, would color the opinion of the MGC or an arbitrator.
And I think that normally we don't have to be this sensitive about it, but the next few weeks between now and December thirty-first, I think is crunch time. And maybe we could even craft what we would feel would be the statement from the board and pass that to all five members and everyone feel comfortable that this is where we're going with things. Because I have a feeling that most everyone, I don't think there's too much disagreement on where we are in, in regards to, we're not accepting any offers at this time. We're reviewing it. We're, we're in the middle of deliberations and talking to our experts. So something like that could be.
Called talking points?
Talking points. Thank you.
Loose lips sink ship.
Well, no, but I mean, but if, 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 you know, at least we all talk from the same piece of paper, as they say.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, on the other hand, you know, if people, people are just going to talk, they're just going to not necessarily use the same piece of paper.
Now, is there a consensus on the spokesperson? I mean, up till now, traditionally, it has been the chairperson and the town manager. If we feel we want to keep it to just our attorneys because we're in this very complicated situation, how do people feel about that? Because up till now, I've made a point of making no comments to the press.
I have, I have an opinion, clearly. My opinion is twofold. One is, can, other than our attorneys, somebody who's sitting in negotiation be, be good at speaking in terms of, you know, they know, they know too much and that kind of stuff. On the other hand, people who aren't in the, in the negotiation probably don't have any basis for talking. And so I guess my flipping it over to say, we should refer people to the attorneys. I mean, that's how we come to that conclusion.
It might actually be the best. And that way, we know the opinions are going to be the same. And they will be, and we will be advised of those all along.
That doesn't do much when a local, you know, person is trying to get a statement from the town. You know, it's, it's very difficult to refer everything to our attorneys, but we may need to do that.
Well, and this time too, because there's cameras being thrust in front of everybody.
Well, you know.
Who at a time I found out tonight?
We stopped by them.
Well, yeah. I mean, you're sitting at a meeting in West Springfield, and I assume there are cameras there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm going to pick up the hat trick tonight.
Well, that's, I understand it's difficult, but we got to address it.
Well, the other thing is if we get a series of talking points from the attorney, and then if you get the camera in front of you, you have the statements on where Brandon feels that we should go. And then if the board all sees this and, I mean, and understands, it's not opening cameras up to everybody, but at least I feel that we, we have a consensus on where we're going forward. It's just the next few weeks is, Paul?
I, I find it interesting that our attorneys have, and they have from the beginning, that say, you know, watch what you say and you, that's me. Let's put that off. And we're worried about, not that it would be an unfair, what do I call it, not an unfair negotiation, negotiating in bad faith. And we don't seem to be concerned about MGM putting up speakers to at our town meeting and then hosting a party, but just so happened that the same people who happened to speak at town meeting, who didn't know each other, all happened to be at Max's Tavern right after town meeting. And we're not, we're more worried about what a particular selectman says. And I understand there's a dual role there, and we're more concerned about that than, and yet MGM's in our own backyard getting their surrogates to come to our town meeting. And the words were, some of the words were shame on you for not supporting the casino. And I just, I, I have a problem, there was an issue a few years ago where a couple of select board members tried to muzzle another select board member. And literally wanted to take away that select board's member's ability to even write a letter on stationery and, and send out an email as a member of the select board. And I find it, it just, that we're worried that MGM feels bad and can, you know, but more importantly, we're worried that they're going to use it when it comes time for arbitration. That a select board member was mean and nasty to them, and it shows negotiating in bad faith when that person's not in the room negotiating. And I wonder what happens when, if the vote for the, whatever agreement we end up coming up with is four to one, three to two, whatever, five to, you know, four to one, say, does that send a signal for arbitration when we go to arbitration? Because that's where we're headed. We're not going to, I don't think there's enough time to strike a deal with MGM. But is that going to be seen as negative? That if there's one select board member that votes against that proposal? And, you know, I, I said it at a meeting before, are we an offense and our defense? Our attorney said we're an offense, and, and I don't know if we are or not. And I don't, that's not a, I just don't know where we are. I know we're, this is, this stuff up here, I know that's what MGM had to do. They had to throw out offers to everybody and say, look, we threw out offers. And, you know, they want to have something on their plate that says, we're trying to negotiate with Long Meadow without truly negotiating and so forth and sending out like boilerplate offers. But I just, I really, I don't have a problem with anybody coming up with talking points, but I do have a problem in trying to muzzle a select board member because I didn't care for it when it happened a few years ago. And I don't think that, I think every board member has a right to speak their opinion. If they're smart, it's going to be the opinion of the board in a matter like this. But I didn't, I don't think people got elected under smartness in its entirety. So, and anything that we come up with tonight and say, and I don't disagree that we should have, shouldn't have talking points. I don't disagree with that at all. And I think the communication, if we really want to try to make it official, should come from the attorney, period. And that way, because the attorney's distance, distant from us, it's not us having that opinion. It's not the town manager, it's not us, it's the attorney who's going to speak for the town because they're representing us. Just like that lawyer on the courthouse steps. I think that's the, the proper entity or person to do that, because they also have all the information. And because of this, this lack of executive session, they can't, we don't know what they have in their, in their portfolio. They do. So they can speak to this much better than, than we can, I think. And I would, I would think that they would be the right people to speak about it.
Yeah, and I, we can't stop people from speaking. My concern is sometimes people are saying things that I don't feel are factually true. And which means we now have to start sending out competing press releases. And if we feel that the, the board doesn't have a consensus on who's going to be speaking and what will be going out, then that's what we'll have to do. We'll have to start sending out press releases and statements from our attorney on, on where things stand. So right now, is there an agreement that we will try to come to a opinion on, on what information is coming out when? And then, or statements? And if there's a disagreement and counterstatements, we will just have to respond on making sure that factual information goes out. Because there are, in my opinion, two things that concern me. One is not just that if a statement goes out that is not accurate and MGM decides to use this as an element of bad faith, but it also means information gets out to the residents that needs to be corrected. And there's, there's two issues there. And we can become more aggressive in getting the information out, because I think it's, the next few weeks is important, not just for our relationship with MGM, but also the residents. This is a big decision for them also. Mark?
Yeah. First of all, Paul, I, my intent was not to muzzle anybody. My, my intent is to separate official spokespersons from individual opinions. You know, we can all and will continue to all issue our opinions. That's why we were elected, because we have five different opinions. But when we're, as an official spokesperson, we can't have five official spokespersons. But I think, do think, Marie, that factual talking points would be important for us to have. You know, to communicate that list of what the offer is on the table to the residents of Long Meadow is of value. You know, when somebody says, what do you think of the talking point? What do you think of the author, offer? The town of Long Meadow is, is developing its response. That's our official action, because that's all we're doing, is developing an official response. You know, I can tell them what my opinion is, but my opinion doesn't mean anything, because that's not going to be necessarily the town's response. So I, I think we've still got to separate out opinion from, from individual opinions from a directive of the select board. And this is a very difficult situation, because we cannot put together a direction in open meeting without tipping our hand to, to the group we're negotiating with.
And I don't want people to become emotional in regards to where the offers are, because this is the beginning of the process. And it is a process of negotiation. Offers are on the table. We're moving to something else. What we will see here in the next few weeks, there's, there's going to be some changes. I mean, I'll just emphasize, we're in the beginning of the process. And what you see behind us is going to change. And it will depend a lot of our attorneys and our experts and the input from the select board that we'll be getting back and forth.
Okay, I think if we did a summation of everything we've heard, we would like to have an official spokesperson, but we realize it's likely not possible to enforce it. Is that correct?
Yes.
So do we want to vote, have a motion on an official spokesperson for those of us choose, who choose to use the official spokesperson?
I would welcome a motion.
Okay, and I believe, Mr. Gold, you had made a reference, you thought that the attorney may be the best. Was that a motion that you made?
It was a motion, but go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I'd like to present a motion that we officially, as a board, adopt that our official spokesperson for casino mitigation items will be our attorney.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So if I do, I mean, I've been fielding a lot of media calls on this so far.
Right.
So in the future, I should refer those calls to the attorneys.
That was, that was the item, Stephen, that I was hoping would come out of discussion, because I understand the position you're in, because you, you are getting a lot of phone calls. And by, by the very, very virtue of your position, you will get the phone calls.
Well, by virtue, and I completely understand that the sensitive, sensitivity of this issue puts it beyond the norm of regular town business. But the role of the town manager, part of the role, or the duties enumerated for the town manager is coordinator of public information. And I'm happy to continue doing that. I'm also happy to defer to the attorneys on it. I just, it'll just mean a little more, a little less access for the media, but if the board, if that's the, the will of the board, I'm, I'm fine with that.
My understanding, though, is if we, the attorney comes up with a series of talking points and has a quote from the attorney and that is crafted, that could be something that would be released by the town?
The only, and the other thing I'll say is, we also should then have, we can get talking points from the attorney, but we should give talking points to the attorney. I mean, the attorney isn't as close to the town and isn't as, in as much of the deliberation discussion of the board as either myself or the chair or even some of you. And so we want to make sure, I mean, because if the attorney is the official spokesperson, then we, then what they say, then they speak for the town, we better, you know, make sure that they've developed. And I, I'm comfortable that they have, but have enough familiarity with the, with the town and the select board that we will trust them to, and I say trust, but that you all, you all are comfortable that they will speak for the town on official casino matters.
How about a weekly press release?
Well, that's fine. I mean, weekly isn't, isn't that much. What I was just going to say is, is we were just talking, I think, Marie, you were talking about, you know, we need to play the public relations game with, with MGM. And, and, you know, when you, when your response is no comment, and, and as Paul would say, and MGM's out there talking all they want to, you don't win the public relations game. So, you know, to one degree, you know, I'm torn, because I want to make sure that we, we're not off there, out there doing the wrong thing. On the other hand, we can't afford to lose a public relations game, because we keep saying, no comment, no comment, and MGM's, and the only side that gets printed is MGM's side.
I mean.
No, we haven't done that. But I'm saying going forward, if all we could say was no comment, and, you know.
One of, I guess what I'm thinking is, in my context with the media, just to report on how that's been going, I've been trying to really be as neutral as possible and try and discuss with, with the media what is known public information and, you know, everything else that isn't. You know, communicate where we are openly and honestly, but not necessarily try and spin things one way or the other. And, you know, because there is a strategy to, if we're talking about public relations and, you know, campaigns, there is a strategy to that. And we should make sure that our, if the attorney is a spokesperson, that he understands what our strategy is, or that he develops it.
Should we have the, continue with the vote, and then we can ask the attorney to weigh in on how he feels about being able to be in the position to do this? Or should we have a team?
And I guess if we do that, we're obligating for fees too, aren't we?
Yeah.
Every phone call is a fee. And a lot of, a lot of the correspondence is nothing but news coverage that everybody pretty well knows anyway, but it's an official news release. Would we be better off to, you know, getting back with you to say, even every two or three days, have a, have an official press release made up? And, and that is our, that is our statement. It's a press release. Because this thing is clicking along at a pretty good pace. Is that the best route that we can do?
I, I think that's fine, to have something that, again, it goes in the nature of talking points. And if there are talking points, they can go out to the press in a, in a paragraph or two, and that's what we've, what we've released. And if we're asked questions, you know, you and I and Paul, not being in the negotiations, are going to stick to the script because that's all we know.
That's talking points. And that's not talking points, it's talking points and the answers.
Yeah.
You know, that's the official position as of that, as of that moment in the town. Is that, is that a better way to meet the needs of what we're, we're asking for?
I guess, well, I guess I'd suggest that the, the guidance we get from our attorney on a semi-regular, on a regular basis really is in bulletized format.
Yeah, but it also says on the top of it, attorney-client privilege.
We're not having that.
We do need, we do need a Reader's Digest, we do need a Reader's Digest version of that, for sure.
Which we seem to be crafting fairly well. Maybe you sit down, you review with the attorney a every-other-day press release, and the attorney is approving it.
Okay.
Any?
I mean, my concern there, I mean, I just.
It's the cost to the attorneys.
Well, it's the cost to attorneys. It's, it's the, having it on a regular schedule to some extent makes it, you have to manufacture news sometimes. And so that's where, I, I guess if there's, I wouldn't say put it on a schedule, but semi, we are getting regular updates at least once a week. I, it's up to you guys. I don't know.
What do you think, Paul?
I, I don't know why we're worried about the media. I really don't. Most of the time it's wrong. And I don't know why we're, why we're worried about it. I really don't. I think that if there's something that we decide, I think if there's something that, there's some sort of proposal that comes back from MGM, then I think the attorney can just send that out and, you know, on behalf of the town of Long Meadow and, and, and not what we get, obviously, what he sends to us, an attorney-client privilege, but get it out there. I, I don't think there's that much news to worry about what's going on. And I, and I think if you want an official spokesman, we're, we're, we are the client. There's a negotiate, a negotiation going on. There's an arbitration that's going to happen. And if you were in front of the judge for, you know, hit and run, you wouldn't be talking to the press on the steps of, of the courthouse. Your attorney would.
Paul, you're right. My, my concern though is, we've had documents going out on stationery that says the select board of Long Meadow. And even though it says, the first thing it says, writing as an individual on, on letterhead, you know, I mean, clearly we can't stop it. We can't stop it, but it's disconcerting, especially when potentially, it might color the opinion of the gaming commission or the, or an arbitrator. That's all.
I hear you. It's not going to stop it.
That's, and that was my reason for bringing it up. And if we're not going to worry about it, then we're not going to worry about it.
I really, I, you know, I, I don't know, I'm getting back to my original point is, you know, all I've heard is that whatever we say is bad for us in negotiation, negotiations, but whatever MGM does, it's okay. And we haven't, we're.
Well, I think we're taking notes on that, too.
Well, we might be taking notes, but they're not worried about what they're saying publicly about Long Meadow or anything else. They're not worried about, you know, the stacking, like I said, the people who spoke at town meeting happened to go to a party, you know, just out of the blue, that, so something was pre-arranged by MGM or, or an agent of MGM to get people to speak at that meeting and then go to a party afterwards. And And, and that's okay. But that point should be brought up just as much as a letter that's going to go from the no casino Springfield person. That should be brought up just as much as that letter would be brought up by MGM.
Or we are responsible for ourselves and what we say and do, not for what MGM says and does. And it is what we say and do that has, uh, the most direct impact on our ability to, um, go represent the town in this process.
Rich, I, at this point, I maybe just suggest we withdraw the motion because it, it's going to be what it's going to be, you know, unfortunately, but.
Well, then what we'll do is we'll try to look at a, uh, press release reviewed by the attorney and try to have a common voice. And everyone else have.
Was the motion seconded?
Yeah, Paul seconded.
I did.
Yeah. And it was discussion, so it is.
If you're going to draft, that's fine. So why, you know, if that's the thing you're going to do, if you're going to send out, if we're going to have the attorney drafted, then why doesn't the press release come from the, from the Long Meadow Select Board?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
And there's four people that just say, that's what we want to do. If the fifth person wants to chime in and say, yes, that's what we want to do. It doesn't matter because it's five, nothing or four, one, then that becomes the official press release of the Long Meadow Select Board. And maybe that counters that.
Fine.
I think that would, might solve it. How do you feel about that?
No, that's fine.
I'm willing to go any, any direction you want. I understand the problem, but I'm having difficulty on finding a cure.
I know.
It's, it's a difficult one to cure because we do not have any legal means to stop it.
Yeah. And I, I think more important than extraneous comments is I want us to have a common voice where we start putting forth where our positions are. And I think the next few weeks, up till now.